Go ahead and call to order the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly Regular Meeting. We are in the Assembly Chambers. It is Thursday, October 5th, 2023 at 6:30 PM. First thing is the invocation with Major Dave Davis of the Salvation Army.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Join me, please. Gracious heavenly Father, we take a moment to bow our hearts and minds before you. We give you the praise and glory for the privilege to be here this evening. Father, we give thanks. We come seeking your blessing upon us as a people, upon these sacred lands. Father, we ask your blessing upon us throughout this season. There's a great activity. We have much hope, and we have many endeavors in the fire. Father, we ask your blessing upon our mayor, our assembly members and staff, the men and women who support them. Father, there's a great deal of blessing already had. Father, for your continued blessing, we give you the praise and glory. And we pray these things in the sacred name of Christ Jesus, our Lord. Amen.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are gathered on the traditional homeland of the Supiaka Lutic people, and we acknowledge the ten tribes of the Kodiak Lutic region. We recognize the Lutic culture that enriches our community to this day. Roll call, please.
Mr. Delgado.
Here.
Mr. Griffin.
Here.
Mr. LeDoo.
Here.
Mr. Sharrett.
Here.
Mr. Smiley.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Turner. Mayor Art.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Mr. Turner just in the last 10 minutes had text Nova that he wasn't feeling good. So, Scott, he wished to excuse.
Move to excuse Assembly Member Turner.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is approval of the agenda and consent agenda.
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. For everyone's information, the consent item is the approval of minutes, special meeting of September 14th, 2023, and regular meeting of September 21st, 2023. Next item is citizens' comments. This is agenda items not scheduled for public hearing and general comments. The phone number, the local phone number is, of course, 907-486-3231. The toll-free number is 1-855-492-9202. I'd like you to sign in, state your name for the record, turn on the microphone before speaking, address all remarks to the Assembly as a body and not to any member thereof. If calling in, turn off any listening devices to prevent feedback. Thank you.
Good evening. This is a reminder that the property tax deadline is coming up. Those people who are making full payments, it's due Monday, October 16th, in order to avoid penalties and interest. If you missed your first half payment, which was August 15th, then in order to avoid penalties and interest, you need to pay the full amount due Monday, October 16th. And for those that are paying half payments that made their August payment, the next tax deadline is November 15th for the second half. Thank you.
Thank you for that information. Anyone else wishing to come forward, please do at this time.
Hello, my name is Dan Rohr, Mayor and Assembly opportunity to come speak to you. Yesterday, I was, I'm not sure what the right word would be. I was disappointed to hear that you guys had appealed, but then when I read the initial document, I was like, oh, kind of get it. The notice dated October 3rd. I was like, okay, so you need a little more time to negotiate in good faith with Canada. You know, now this will kind of give you till November 13th. Makes a ton of sense to me. Not super expensive to have your attorney write two pages in a boilerplate, you know, thing. And so I ended yesterday feeling like, well, I maybe wouldn't have handled it that way, but I'm not behind the closed doors, so maybe I would have. But it's a great way to get another month. Kind of thinking about it like as a timeout in basketball, slow down the play a little bit, let's give everybody a chance to breathe, and then we'll talk. So, then this morning, then this morning, I ran across, you know, your filing to appeal, which obviously you weren't just looking for a couple extra days because you immediately filed 22 findings of fact in opposition to the Superior Court, which frankly, by the way, as you read it, feels an awful lot like you're desperately trying to throw something against the wall to stick. Some of this stuff is, I mean, anyways, it's just frustrating. But anyways, I would like to encourage the Assembly, two things. I've encouraged you before, maybe you've done it, maybe you haven't. I would encourage you to get a second opinion from another attorney and not just the one that I was involved in hiring. I, I mean, I was in favor of hiring Scott Brandt Erickson, but I do think when you're talking about this kind of money, you're talking about another year, maybe two, to take stuff to the Supreme Court. You're talking about, you know, at least another $100,000. If you lose again, you're going to pay their attorney's fees again. I mean, you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. And my wife asked me today, she goes, why in the world do you care so much? And I've been asked that by a number of people, and the reality is, is because I hate, hate, hate to waste money. It just, I just can't stand it. And I look at our community, we resoundingly lost in the Superior Court, and so we're appealing it to the Supreme Court with hopes that there'll be a different opinion. I just don't like chasing bad money with good money, and so it's hard for me to be okay with that. Anyways, I would encourage you first off to get a second opinion if you haven't already. Secondly, instead of those of us that are interested in having to try to find these documents online, they are public documents, I would encourage us to just set up on the Borough's webpage for your active litigation that you're involved in, that the filings are readily available if people want to be able to see them. That way, if members of the public would like to come make comment. So anyways, I was disappointed to see that we weren't just going to take advantage of the, you know, next 15 days or whatever to try to negotiate in good faith. Last comment. Years ago, Providence, it was very difficult to come to terms with a lease, and when I sat in your shoes, it came down to myself and Rebecca Skinner as elected officials going in, negotiating on behalf of the Borough to try to close that last little gap. I would really, really, really encourage you to allow your manager to go negotiate with their CEO and see if we can't come up with a solution that isn't going to cost the members of our community hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, again, thank you. I appreciate the efforts, all the decisions that are in front of you. I appreciate the amount of work that goes into that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else wishing to speak under citizens' comments or call in? Is there anyone on the phone? No one. Okay. Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and move forward. Next item is awards and presentations. There's a proclamation declaring October Filipino-American National History Month. Whereas the Filipino-American history and culture must be promoted because of the role of Filipino-American in the history of Kodiak and Alaska, and whereas positive role models will be able to instill and teach the Filipino-American youth the importance of education, ethnicity, and values of their legacy, and whereas Kodiak is fortunate to count among its population a large concentration of citizens of Filipino descent, including those who have lived in Kodiak for generations and those who are new to the Kodiak area, who contribute to Kodiak's economy and society through their commitment to professions, commerce, family, and the arts. Now therefore, I, Scott Art, Mayor of the Kodiak Island Borough, do hereby complain and proclaim the month of October 2023 is Filipino-American National History Month. And I want to thank you. Please come forward. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Borough Assembly Members. Tonight is a very special occasion as we gather here to accept a proclamation that holds deep significance for our community. On behalf of the Filipino-American Association of Kodiak, it is with immense honor that we humbly accept this proclamation dedicating the month of October as Filipino-American National History Month. Not only does this proclamation recognize the invaluable contribution of the Filipino-American community to the already rich American history, but also serve as a symbol of unity, cultural preservation, and an opportunity to educate others about our heritage. This month-long celebration is a chance to reflect on our shared history, to honor the sacrifice of our ancestors, and to pay tribute to the countless Filipino-Americans who have dedicated their lives to shaping our nation and our own community of Kodiak. We extend our sincere appreciation to the Kodiak community and all of those who have supported us in preserving our culture. This recognition reinforces the importance of cultural diversity, acceptance in our society that supports and fosters a spirit of unity that transcends borders and backgrounds. In closing, let us remember that our heritage is not just a part of history, but a valuable thread in the ever-evolving fabric of America. Together, we will ensure that the legacy of the Filipino-Americans continues to inspire generations to come. Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Borough Assembly Members, for embracing our culture, and let us look forward to a month filled with celebration, remembrance, and harmony. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, just want to keep everybody informed that we're not, the celebration of the Filipino-American National History Month kind of caught us off guard, but we will be doing some transit drive around the 21st of this month, so we'll keep you guys posted. So, thank you again.
Okay. Next item is committee reports. Are there any committee reports either from the public or on the Assembly? Anyone wishing to report? I guess I'll go ahead and report that the building code, Joint Building Code Review Committee between the city and the Kodiak Island Borough met for the second time Wednesday, yesterday, and starting to review the codes the state of Alaska has adopted, and we're needing to review those for the adoption, would come forward to the City Council and to the Borough Assembly probably sometime next year. And we may do it where, bringing the commercial, it may even come late this year on the commercial stuff. So, just letting you know that that is in the works. That's all I got there. Borough Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Assembly and Mayor. For the Managers' Report tonight, I wanted to let you know that we do have an open planner position that had a successful interview, and we are bringing that applicant up to Kodiak next week for a visit to meet that person in person. And then after we scheduled that, we had another interview get set up from another qualified applicant, so we're going to have some choices to make on who fills that position. That position has not been filled in a really long time, and when our new Community Development Director came, he suggested some changes that we made to that application to widen the net a little bit, and we immediately got two people. So, obviously, suggestions worked very well. I hope you're not tired of hearing about this yet, but Mark Hickey will be here on October 26th. We will be talking about our CIP list and an agenda setting this week. We decided that we would be talking about our federal and our state CIP list, so you'll have information on that upcoming. The solid waste contract, on an upcoming agenda, we're going to talk, or I don't know how the mayor's going to set it up, but we're looking at setting up another subcommittee for the solid waste contract like we did with the First Amendment, so that we can have some Assembly member review before it goes to Alaska Waste. The school district, we have long been looking for that mystery agreement between the school district. You'll find it attached to the Managers' Report. The last time it was updated was 2015, and it lays out memorandum of understanding for in-kind services, and that includes maintenance. So I have a meeting with the superintendent on Monday, so we're going to start going over that and see if we can get that updated. This week, I was contacted by the Natural Resources Conservation District about their willingness to help fund the receptionist position at the KFRC building. They're willing to fund up to 50% for the next four to five years, so we're going to work with them and look at our budget and see how we can get that open on a more frequent schedule. So that was really exciting, and I did not know that was coming, so that was a wonderful surprise. There is a commercial hazardous waste event that's happening both today and tomorrow at the landfill for commercial businesses to remove items from their facilities during the event. At the KFRC, there is a draft permit of our discharge permit that is out, that is open for public comment. There's a draft fact sheet, and the technical form is 2G that's available for the public to review if they're interested. Our Government Services Administration personnel will be in Kodiak to review our lease for the Kodiak soil and water conservation lease, and that's who we're going to be talking to about the reception position next week. There hasn't been a lot of changes on the projects at the school. We're still waiting on the hardware for Norstar, but we have started the electrical commissioning for the pretreatment plant this week, and we're looking at starting up the pretreatment plant for the first time next week, so everyone's getting excited about that. There is a Health and Facilities Advisory Board scheduled for October 30th. We expect an update on the sterile processing department renovation requirements, and they also had some alternatives for us, included bringing over a sterilizer from St. Elias Hospital to Kodiak because it fit in with our current equipment. In finance, as Dora said, during public comment, the next property tax deadline is October 16th. Full payment of taxes is required by that day to avoid penalties and interest. IT is without Paul this week, and so they're learning all the things that Paul did while he was here. There's a list of things in the report about what they're working on. I was excited to see that they're reviewing all of our licenses to our different software and getting rid of any extra licenses to save us money. In assessing, they continue to work on requests for business and nonprofit exemptions. The ones that we have left for this year are on hold until we do our ordinance change that's coming up later in October. For senior citizen and disabled veterans exemptions, they've decided to mail out a postcard 30 days before the deadline, just like we did to announce that we were going to be working in Service District One, just to give people a heads-up, another way to communicate, so they don't miss those deadlines. We are down to three outstanding applications that are awaiting either information from the applicant or the PFD that cannot be processed. We'll have until December 15th for the PFD to give us those information. Oh, I didn't update that final five. It went from five to three from yesterday to today. There are only three remaining applicants left in that, so that's great news. In Community Development, the Planning and Zoning Commission is planning on meeting on October 11th. They're going to be discussing potential changes to accessory dwelling units, and they're looking at requirements for rezone applications. We are in the middle of the pro-housing grant, and our Community Development Director has had meetings with the Kodiak Island Borough School District, Kodiak Island Housing Authority, and has a meeting scheduled for the Administrator for Providence as well. So that is moving forward. That information about that grant is up on our website, which isn't something that we usually do, so if you want more information, there's links right on the Borough website. And then all the rest of that is that memorandum of understanding between us and the school district. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Scott?
In the job description for the person at KFRC, what are we requiring of that person?
For that person, that's been filled by one of our current employees that we have here now, and that job title over there has been called interpretive specialist. So it's been her while she was there, and then during COVID, she moved over here. She works in ENF, so she helps them with all their processing. So we're not hiring for that position. We already have the person. So, but the job description is being able to help assist people know what they're looking at down at the touch tank, and they act as receptionists as well, checking people in. I don't know if you've ever looked behind the counter at the KFRC, but there's a huge bank of cameras where you can watch that whole area and see what people are doing while they're in there.
Okay, thank you.
Joe?
I'd just like to say that I'm encouraged to see that we're getting closer to giving Carlock and Larson Bay their schools. I think school's going on in Carlock now, so that's exciting. I thank all the people that are involved in getting that taken care of.
Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Manager, two questions. The Kodiak Island Borough School District Memorandum of Understanding of In-Kind Services, is this the only document that you know of that represents the agreement that's in place between KIBSD and the Borough?
Yes, this is the only one that they have, and it's the only one that we have, and our Finance Director has a file around that report showing the times that they've tried to meet to update that after 2015, because there's a memo in there after the agreement that says, starting in fiscal year 2018, we will make sure that we're following this. And so I know that there's been work on it since that 2015 date, but there was just not an agreement that was reached since that 2015 agreement.
Thank you. And then one follow-on question, if I may.
Go ahead.
I'm seeing that the swimming pool has stagnated. Is that by design or by accident?
It's by design until our facilities and engineering, sorry, Coast Guard tells me, facilities engineering, Borough tells me engineering facilities. It's until Dave gets back from vacation, we're going to reengage with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Jeff, and then Jared.
Yeah, just very briefly, the in-kind services on this memorandum, and I'm just going from my own memory, with regards to mental health services, I don't believe that's been an in-kind service between the Borough and the district, probably since close to 17. So I don't know if that's been converted over to a cash payment going forward. I think it indicated that in 18, but somewhere around 17, that in-kind service went away. I just, for clarity's sake on that one.
Thank you. Our Finance Director today told me that the state, at that point, no longer allowed that to be done how it was, and that was the last year that it was going to be allowed to be done that way.
Jared?
Thank you. What was I going to say? Oh, so the, I would like to see, once community development is done, putting together this pro-housing grant to just kind of get a debrief of what the department found and from talking with all the stakeholders in the community, and hopefully lead to a larger kind of housing forum that we could maybe put together at a work session or something. I think that'd be helpful to see what they found.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Then we'll move on to messages from the Borough Mayor. Only thing I would say is, I happen to be, when officials with Natural Resources, DNRS, Conservation District were in town, had an opportunity to meet, I had gotten a call and went and met with them, and that was when they, they were here looking at property out at Narrow Cape, and they asked about the touch tank and that, what they were on there, and they were very intrigued and wanted to, and offered to help. And I said, you know, yes, we would be interested in talking to them about that. And it was also for, you know, maybe four years or so. So, I'm glad to hear that Amy's working with that, and that funding will help for keeping it open. So, that's all I have at this time. And next item is new business resolutions. There's Resolution Number FY 2024-8, approving the Assembly meeting calendar for the year 2024. Scott?
Move to adopt Resolution Number FY 2024-08.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Nova?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the Assembly. Ordinance Number FY 2018-12 states that the Assembly is to set and adopt its meeting calendar for the following year by resolution. At the September 28th, 2023 work session, we presented you with an initial draft of the calendar, and based on your wishes from that work session, I have made the changes, and the calendar is attached in your packet. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion on the calendar at this time? Roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. LeDoo.
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett.
Yes.
Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, six zero.
Next item is Resolution Number FY 2024-10, Designating the Temporary Administrative Official During the Absence of the Borough Manager.
Scott?
Move to adopt Resolution Number FY 2024-10.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our current regular administrative official is out of the office through October 30th. This will designate a temporary administrative official to ensure there's no gap of service in the event that I am unable to do my duties.
Okay. Discussion? Any questions?
The only question I have is that you play an important role during an emergency in Kodiak, and would that person be trained to fill that position specifically in your absence?
The, so the, you're right, I would be on the Emergency Services Council in the event of an emergency. Our regular administrative official is Dave Conrad, who has a lot more of that training, but when he's out, that temporary official doesn't necessarily have that.
Any other? Ryan?
Yeah, I actually like the continuity approach that this provides to the Borough, and I think that this is a valid option, and I think that this is the right choice. So, job well done, and I support the proposed in this position. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. LeDoo.
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett.
Yes.
Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, six yes, zero no.
Okay. Next is ordinances for introduction. We have Ordinance Number FY 2024-6, Amending the Kodiak Island Borough Personal Rules and Regulations.
Scott?
Move to advance Ordinance Number FY 2024-06 to public hearing at the next regular meeting of the Assembly.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the ordinance that will update our Personnel Manual to match the collective bargaining agreement that was signed last month. There were, we went page by page through it last week, and there were some questions that I wanted to address. One was why Juneteenth wasn't showing up in action tracking or in changes, and I guess that wasn't actually a change from the last contract to this contract, so that's why it didn't show up. That was in there during the last contract as well. Mr. Turner turned out that it was listed as a Lyft, Uber, and Taxi, so we updated that to Taxi. There is a question in our Leave Without Pay section about what happened for people with their healthcare if they were in extended leave without pay status. I clarified that with our Finance Director. If someone was in an extended leave without pay situation, we don't cut off their healthcare. Their healthcare continues as it was. We just ask them to pay back a portion, but I did add a sentence in there about Cobra, and as an attachment to this, you'll see that there's some information about Cobra in your in your packet, how that takes its steps into place in case someone does lose their healthcare. So I added that into the personnel manual in case that was a question, because I don't want staff to think that their healthcare would end or they would be without it. The state does step up and match that healthcare plan for a temporary plan if they're qualified. The fourth question was about how we track travel expenses. I also added something to the end of this about travel expenses. Mr. Sharrett pointed out the Tax Cut and Jobs Act that is in place through 2025. Those laws changed in 2017, moving into 2018. The way that we do do it through a W-2 instead of a 1099 is in accordance with that act, and so we should not have any problems with that. But I'm happy to answer any questions about anything else that's in there, for the public's sake, because I know the mayor loves to do that. We did update some things to accommodate our regular part-time employees to ensure that they could get healthcare and be eligible for benefits as well. And we updated some language to our human resources coordinator instead of have, we don't have a full-time human resources officer. So it would be our, directing our person who is in charge of that to do those duties.
Discussion? Any questions? Ryan?
I'd like to thank you and Dora for getting this resolved to the moving expenses. This brings a lot of light, and it also brings up valid discussion with your potential hires. So I appreciate that.
Okay. Roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Lidue?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, six yes, zero no.
Thank you. Next is ordinance number FY 2024-7, Reestablishing Boards, Committees, and Commissions as established in the Kodiak Island Borough Code of Ordinances, Title II Administration and Personal Chapter 2.100, Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Scott?
Move to advance ordinance number FY 2024-07 to public hearing at the next regular meeting of the Assembly.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Nova?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the Assembly. All boards, committees, and commissions established under Title II of the Borough Code, with the exception of those mandated by state law, shall terminate by operation of law three years from the date of passage of the code section, unless affirmatively reestablished or continued by the Assembly for a period not to exceed three years. The boards, committees, and commissions reestablished per this ordinance will be for three years, December 31, 2023, until December 31, 2026. There are five boards and committees that are before you, for you to reestablish. This is, this ordinance is for introduction, and it will be up for public hearing at the next meeting of the Assembly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Assembly discussion? Any questions on this at this time? Seeing none, roll call vote on the motion.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Lidue?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes with six yes, zero no.
Okay, next item is confirmation of mayoral appointment to the Parks and Recreation Committee of Father Pisa. Scott?
Move to confirm the mayoral appointment of Mr. Pisa Fau Mui to Parks and Recreation Committee for a term to expire December 31, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Nova?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are two vacant seats on the Parks and Rec, and this appointment will place Mr. Fau Mui in a vacant seat to expire December 31, 24. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, any discussion questions? Seeing none, roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Lidue?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes with six yes, zero no.
Next is confirmation of Assembly appointment to the Minas Gukciu Road Service Area, Mr. Thomas Lance. Scott?
Move to confirm the Assembly appointment of Mr. Thomas Lance to the Minat, Minas Gukciu Road Service Area for a term to expire October 31, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Nova?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have received an application from Mr. Tom Lance. There are currently four vacant seats on the board, and this appointment will place Mr. Lance in a vacant seat to expire December 31, 2025. Mr. Lance historically served on the board from 2011 to, until 2021. Mr. Patty O'Donnell was the only remaining board member on the board, does not object to Mr. Lance's appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Lidue?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes with six yes, zero no.
Okay, next item is citizens' comments. This is for items not scheduled for public hearing and general comments. Local number is 907-486-3231. Toll-free number is 1-855-492-9202. And sign in and state your name for the record. Turn on the microphone before speaking. Address all remarks to the Assembly as a body and not to any member thereof. If calling in, turn off any listening devices to prevent feedback. Anybody wishing to come forward and, and speak, please do it this time. Who?
Good evening, Amy Williams. I'm just supplementing what I should have said during my manager's report. Monday, October 9, is Indigenous Peoples' Day. The borough is open for that. I know that a lot of other things in the community are closed. I just wanted the community to know that we are still open on that day, Monday, the 9th. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Under, anyone else wishing to come forward or call in? Anybody on the phone? Hearing and seeing none? Carly, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Carleen McChesney. I, I don't know why this room isn't plumbful, because there's a lot of exciting things happening in this room and coming down the road also. But apparently, people are listening. I don't know on the internet or on the radio because of all the things that are happening. And the words that kept coming up at the forum were inclusion and equity. And since Mr., one of our Assembly members keeps bringing up the fact about the, the number of people in the community, it just feels really good to see all these people coming in now, to fill some of these boards and the people in the community. It's, we've grown so fast, it feels good to have that inclusion the way it used to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Carly. All righty, anyone else wishing to come forward or call in? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to Assembly member comments. I was gonna start with Mr. Turner, but Joe, it's your turn.
Thank you. I, I'm one of the last people that remember my hometown as it was before roads, when we had cow trails. You were just as likely to meet a cow on the trail as you would a human. And it was a toss-up whether you'd be chasing the cow or the cow would be chasing you. The reason I bring this up is that we have a lot of old knowledge that is being, that we're losing each day. Every time we lose an elder, we lose a library, people say, and it's true. I really never noticed that before until my hair started changing color. And I'm one of those people that have some of the knowledge from the past that I think is important to pass on to the future and to the people that are here now. This is one of the reasons that I always advocate for Native peoples to run for boards, commissions, and the Assembly. But not only the Native people, I think Native people of any country would do well to be up here on this Assembly. We miss out on a lot of different knowledges and different ways of thinking when we don't have those different people sitting up here. I have found in my term here that just being seen, sitting with you people, makes a big difference on how the villages and how people like me are treated and thought of. So I think it's great and wonderful that we get more people to, interested in doing this. We, we need to make our Assembly look more reflective of our community as a whole. And I like the direction that this borough is going in. I remember my very first meeting was firing a long-term employee, which was weird to me. But I, and it took a long time to get it filled, to see it filled, but I'm so glad that it is. And I think that the change that I've seen since I've been here has been for the better. I hope that it continues. And that's all for tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Jared?
Just a couple of things. One, thanks to everyone in the community who turned out to vote this week, and a big thanks to the election workers and the clerks, and to those who will be doing the canvassing next week. It's a lot of work, and we really do appreciate that work that you do. Secondly, I want to encourage my colleagues up here on the dais to look at a couple of things that came through NACO this week, National Association of Counties. They have some really great resources about a couple of things that we're really interested in talking about over the next several months. One is housing. They had a great, published a very comprehensive report on affordable housing and what other counties are doing across the United States. Holy cow, I learned a lot by reading, and it's 48 pages, but it's a quick 48 pages. And then, and then there was one on, also on pilt, and I know we're gonna be talking about pilt too over the next eight, nine months. So if you need to get caught up to speed, I would encourage looking at those NACO resources. We're a member, and they've got some great stuff. So, happy reading.
Thank you. Jeff?
Just like to ditto and echo Assembly Member Griffin's comments to the clerk staff and the election workers, and I appreciate the effort and the time those, those folks put forward to, to run a successful election for us. So thank you.
Larry?
Well, at the top of my notes here was to say thank you to Nova and her management of the elections, and I hope that maybe you should take over national elections, and the world would be a lot different. So, but you do a great job, and I know you take it really seriously, and you really, really can tell. And also, every year, it's nice to meet all the election workers. Some of them have been there for years, and I get to see people I haven't seen in years. So that's nice. I wanted to really appreciate Mr. Viscocho's comments. And also, I was gonna talk about Indigenous Peoples' Day on the 9th, but you brought that up. But I really like living in Kodiak, because we are a real diverse community, and we get along. We work together. Certainly, there are changes that would benefit everybody, and if people listened to everybody a bit more, we'd probably do more. But I was just thinking of Joe's comments, and I really appreciate them. But I remember walking on those trails in Uzinku before there were roads, and I remember a little Mr. Delgado running a little faster than the cows running around over on that island. So I guess that makes me a little bit older and a little grayer than you, Joe. But I do appreciate the goals that you've set. I read through some of the comments, and pre-election comments and election comments. And, you know, one of the number-one goals that I have, and there are many, and that's to honor our community, but is to make sure that our community becomes vibrant and growing, and without land availability, available to young families, without commercial land available. And we have a lot of land, and we really need to find a way to release it, and we need to be able, we have good leadership in our planning and zoning, and our assessing, and we really need to find a way to catalyze making land available. When I was on the Assembly before, a number of years ago, that was a priority, and we set up a committee, but nothing happened. You know, people would, and I came out of that whole meeting feeling like there's an underground that doesn't want land to be available. And the school district, you know, over the last, I don't know, 10 years, has lost over almost 300 kids. We're a growing community, and we're losing the very population that we need to, to grow and to stay young and to take care of us old people. And, but it has to be lands, and we're gonna have to take that on and find a way to really make it happen. And finally, I, and so I'm really gonna be pushing lands to try to figure it out. Again, I think we have good leadership. It's honest leadership on the Assembly, and I certainly welcome new Assembly members, whoever they are, or turn out to be. It'll be great to have that new energy. And I just wanted to end these comments with, I served on the Assembly for three years before and finished a year, and I have never seen such productivity out of the manager's office as I've seen. These are reports that you do. You seem to be knowledgeable about complex issues. You ferreted out the school district, borough information that other people have failed. I don't know how you found where I hit it, but in any case, I really appreciate the job that you're doing. And if you're here tonight even, Assembly member saying that when I ask you a question, you come back with an answer, and I appreciate that. And I know that your leadership will be important to everything that we do. And thank you.
Scott?
I want to thank the people that ran for office. In my, in our household, one of our people in our, in our household ran for office. I have to tell you how incredibly humbling it is to be a vote getter. And the debt that you owe to the people is really profound. And I think you don't understand that unless you've run for office. So hats off to everybody that ran for office. Everybody, even. So, thank you.
Ryan?
You're welcome. I have four points to talk about tonight. One, a little sobering. It is public knowledge, and I do have permission to disclose this. So I want to give my deepest condolences for Major Dave Davis and his recent loss. Lola's service will be tomorrow at 5:00 PM at the Salvation Army. It is open to the public. Let's see, congratulations to the entire Filipino-American community for today's proclamation. I think that that is precedent-setting. I would love to see our proclamations displayed with pride in our hallways as we work towards opening up our public facility again. To complement these proclamations, I'd like to see photographs representing and giving a, kind of a visual portrayal of the historic events leading up to said proclamation or, or said event. I think that that tour would, would help bring people into our facility as well. Thank you to Pisa and Tom for stepping up to our boards and commissions. I do appreciate it. Finally, thank you to our election workers. I came up at 8:00 PM on election night, and the room was filled, and the TVs were array, and the counts were going, and everyone was upbeat and positive, and it was, as my first experience, really, really neat to watch. So I will echo the words that we've already heard from the much, much, much older Assembly members that appreciate you guys and what you guys have done. So Nova, you and your team and your volunteers were amazing. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next Assembly work session is scheduled on Thursday, October 12, at 6:30 PM in the Borough Assembly Chambers. The next Assembly regular meeting is scheduled on Thursday, October 19, at 6:30 PM in the Borough Assembly Chambers. The Canvas Board will meet at 9:00 AM on Wednesday, October 11. Here in the Assembly Chambers, public members are welcome to attend. Scott?
Move to adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at 7:20.